Josh.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting of September 7th, 2023 to order. Do we have any special intentions?
You want to keep?
Chief Conley?
Go ahead.
Oh.
No. Conley, you got it? No, me?
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah, you got it.
Longtime Kenner Police Department volunteer Ms. Pat Tassan died a couple of weeks ago. She was in the first Citizens Police Academy, and she was a staunch advocate of the Kenner Police Department. So she would often get put in time out when in functions defending the police. So Chief Conley and I went and met with the family last Friday, last Thursday, and offered our condolences. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Schwart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Longtime friend, brother firefighter Dennis Cracker finally succumbed to cancer and passed away a couple of days ago. He was laid to rest today. Longtime advocate for firefighter safety, building fire departments on the North Shore from the ground up, and he's going to be sold to miss by Kenner Fire and by all firefighters in the area.
Thank you, Councilman. Seeing no others, Councilwoman Dunn, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Dear governor of the state, as we come to the end of our day, all we can say is a word of all things we did. All that was sworn, that has gone, that is more than taken. They're too scared as once again to fall on course of life. For the mayor, for the U S team, and the city council, and for the administration and all that makes up. Kenner today, our great residents, they must, that as we go through the business handling, what we need to handle for this city, that you will give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that the decisions we make will be made in the government of the people of this great city. In Jesus' name we pray.
Come on, amen. Thank you, Councilwoman. We have some young men from Boy Scout Troop 470 that will lead us in the pledge. Men?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I could make an announcement. If there's anyone in the audience that is here to address the counsel on case Z 523 in University City, this item will be removed, and we didn't want you to have to sit through the meeting. We wanted to make that announcement at the beginning of the meeting. Also, if there's anyone here to address the counsel, please remember to sign the sign-in sheet that's located at the front of, at the door, and we will take you at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum. Under correspondence, reports from the mayor, C A O, or department heads. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request at the, I've received requests from the legal department to defer this executive session listed on the agenda for two meetings. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt, to defer for two meetings. Councilmember in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Chairman, we have representatives from Energy here to make a brief presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Hamby?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Patrick Hamby, on behalf of Energy, I'm here to make a brief announcement. It's a positive announcement. I'm like one of those, those old cars that hit 100,000 miles. When you hit 100,000 miles, you start kicking the tires and looking for a trade-in that's more fuel efficient with less miles and blonder hair. So I'm here to introduce Jimmy Akins. He's our new customer service manager for Kenner and the East Bank of Jefferson Parish. I'm not leaving. You still have me as your contact. I'm kind of the weekend car that you drive around that you don't want to wear out too much because I'm old and tired, but Jimmy's your new efficient minivan to haul the kids all around. So I'll let Jimmy have a few words, and thank y'all very much. And again, I'm not going anywhere, but Jimmy's here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Hamby. Mr. Aiken, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know how I feel about being compared to a minivan, but like a cooler car would have been fine, but no. I just want to thank everybody here to, for letting me be here today and speak. I think I've met most, if not all of you. It's great to finally put faces to names that I've seen through my emails. Just really looking forward to hitting the ground running with y'all and being the best rep I can be for Energy. Patrick did a tremendous job, big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to the challenge of backfilling his role and helping y'all out as best I can. Thank you all.
Thank you and welcome. What's your plan for the weather for tonight when this happens?
I'm praying the lights stay on, especially right now, but if they don't, I'm here, so you can just yell at me right now.
And we'll be texting you all night if it does.
That's fine. I'll be up.
You're gonna jump in that minivan and get out of here, right? Councilman Brannigan?
I just want to let everybody know I've already used Jimmy two days ago, and he did a great job and got something repaired really fast.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
You got it. I'll be brief, hopefully. As those of you that travel Roosevelt Boulevard between West Metairie and West Napoleon know that some temporary repairs have been made to make the roadway drivable. The repair cost a total of $135,000. The total reconstruction of the roadway is in a design phase now, so hopefully they come in quicker than Jose's estimate of two years. But hopefully these temporary repairs last two years. Yesterday, we broke ground on the long overdue power Boulevard walking path upgrades. This project includes widening of the walking bike path, lighting improvements, and a bridge cross over the canal by Vintage Drive. The notice to proceed on the design of this project was issued on October 22nd, 2014. It's a federal aid project, and the city's funding sources, Kenner's 2030 Plan Bonds. No monies from the city's general fund will be used to finance this project. And this project, the notice to proceed in the design work in 2014 is more than doubled the cost of construction. Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th to October 15th. The city will be hosting for the first time the celebration of Mexico's independence in partnership with the consulate of Mexico, who will be here at the city's Second Annual Hispanic Heritage Fair, starting at 5:00 PM in Heritage Park. Also, in an effort to alleviate the large amount of open and outstanding cases in mayor's court, we implemented an amnesty program during the month of September. This program provides an opportunity for those certain mayor's court charges to clear, certain mayor's court charges to clear their cases without concern of being physically arrested. If an outstanding ticket is paid through this program, late fees and certain fees will be waived, and attachments for arrests will be cleared. Only tickets issued prior to July 1st, 2023 are eligible for this program, and the Louisiana Department of Motor Vehicle Fees cannot be waived. Also, I'd like to thank, well, I guess the weather's kind of like it was Saturday down here. I'd like to thank members of the Police Department, Fire Department, General Services, Public Works, and Emergency Management for their quick response to Saturday's EF0 tornado that caused damage to a few buildings here in Rivertown. And I'd like to call up Chief Terrence Morris to recognize some of the firemen that assisted in the fires in southwest Louisiana.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council citizens. Everyone knows about the wildfires that we had throughout the state of Louisiana, and I'm happy to state that the Kenner Fire Department was able to assist at the request of the Louisiana State Fire Marshal with extinguishing some of those fires. On August 26th, we sent five members to Vernon Parish. Five, five members were Hastings, Bentley, Burket, Sterling, and Plato for 72-hour deployments at the request of the state fire marshal. On August 30th, we sent an additional five members to relieve those members, which were members Bynum, DiMaggio, Simon, D Mac, and Cock. Coach. Cock. Coke. And during that deployment, the state fire marshal, because of the extent of the fire, they asked that these members stay an extra 48 hours, which the deployments are voluntary amongst our members. So we sent three additional ones to relieve three of our members, which were Boudreaux, Tusa, and White. And the deployments are voluntary for our members, so I'm proud that our members, without hesitation, stepped up to respond to those fires and assist our brothers and sisters on the west side of the parish with extinguishing the fires in Vernon Parish, the large fire that they had going on that burned some 40,000 acres, I think the final total was. And I think that the state fire marshal demobilized that event Tuesday morning. And I just, in addition, I'd like to say this about the members of the fire department. Over the past week, we had several critical incidents that our guys responded to in heroic fashion. We had a 48-year-old that had a heart attack and performed CPR for 15 minutes and administered three shocks to him. The person was transported to Kenner Regional and ended up with, and walking out the hospital. Two days later, we ended up getting a pulse and respirations back on the scene. So that was a historic effort, as well as we had a three-year-old that drowned Sunday, and we were able to get that three-year-old back. We transported that three-year-old instead of waiting for the ambulance to arrive to Oxnard, Kenner also, as well as we had a real bad accident on I-10 where we had to extricate three victims, three patients from a vehicle. One of them was real critically injured, and they all were transported to United Medical Center in New Orleans, which is the only Level 1 trauma center that we have in the region. So our guys are doing, making a historic effort. They're doing a great job, and they should be commended for that. So thank you, council.
Thank you, chief. And I was also asked today to say something about an incident that occurred today at near Kenner Discovery School where a student was hit by a car on a bicycle. And to address the project that's ongoing to put sidewalks immediately adjacent to the school, the corner, that'll tie into Inspired Living. So you're going to have from Inspired Living all the way to the corner with a sidewalk and around, down, vintage. Kenner was awarded, applied and received for a grant back in September of 2021. We came in office in July of last year, and it learned that since the award, nothing was really done to move the stuff forward. So the anticipated completion date, the cost is around, is $300,000. Eighty, twenty, eighty federal money, 20-hour money. Estimated start of construction is the first quarter of 2024, and it's a two-to-three-month project. So hopefully, just the way things go when you're dealing with government is, it'll probably be, a ribbon would be cut on the last day of school. It's just, it's just the way it goes. And I'll have a little more to say when item 15L comes up, because the one that was put on from the floor last, last meeting. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next, we have resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor. Moving on to the consent agenda, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of August 3rd, 2023. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A, a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to the Discovery Health Sciences Foundation on October 28th, 2023, for their Fall Fest at 3837 Loyola Drive, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 2B, a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Divine Mercy Roman Catholic Church for a seafood festival on October 6th, 7th, 8th, 2023, at 4337 Salentini Parkway, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A, a resolution approving the application of Divine Mercy Roman Catholic Church to conduct charitable games of pull tabs and raffle on October 6th, 7th, and 8th, 2023, at 4337 Salentini Parkway, Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 2359-23, New Hope Community Development Corporation, to hold a public gathering on September 17th, 2023, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM for the purpose of a back-to-school safety event at Susan Park Gymnasium, 502 Veterans Boulevard, Kenner, Louisiana. And I believe that will conclude the consent agenda. Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, to approve the consent agenda. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, item 8, public hearings for final passage, we have none. Item 9 is ordinances for sale, transfer, purchase, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. Item 9A, a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,00335, and ordinance approving the lease of the Gordon Avenue Right-of-Way Hanson Place subdivision, which said property is owned by the city of Kenner. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Please come forward now.
Yes, Council President. I have a very brief presentation, just to give a quick overview. The applicant is H2O Property Management, 143 West Airline Drive, Kenner, Louisiana, 70062. This is the renewal of a lease that they have had with the city for 37 years. I think it started in 1986. At one point, it was a 25-year lease and has subsequently been broken up, and now it's in a series of five-year leases. So their lease expires this month, and they're here to request an additional five-year lease. The property was appraised. The appraisal amount for this particular lease for this year was $8,700, and they've agreed to that. And as I said, this has been a long, long, long-term lease with this group to run a campground, RV parking off of airline highway. 37 years.
Thank you, Mr. Dufoor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to close the public hearing. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Back to your original motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to approve. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. Item 11A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,00332, and ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted on March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning lots 1 and 2, Square A, Oakland Plantation, from S I Special Industrial to R 2, 2 Family Residential. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to open the public hearing. Councilmembers in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this subject matter?
Yes. Yes, I have a, again, I have a brief presentation. The applicants in this particular case are Angelo Scott, Larry Scott, and Amy Darnes, residents of the city of Kenner. They're requesting to rezone these two lots in order to place a trailer on the property that was previously there. This property is located fronts on Salvador Road and generally bounded by the Wyandham Railroad to the south, Kingston Lane to the west, Kenner Avenue to the north, and the Betsy B Hammond Parking Playground in Square 10 across Salvador Avenue. The lots are currently undeveloped, but previously were developed residentially. These lots, all these lots that you see, have been zoned Special Industrial, probably, I believe, when I checked, for about 50-plus years. But there's never been any, any industrial development on this property. It's only been developed residentially. So when we received this request, we sat down and looked at it and determined that not just these two lots, but eventually all of these lots should be rezoned to R 2, which is the most closest approximate zoning to the north on Salvador Street that runs to Airline. And so the planning department supported this particular request, and the neighbors supported their request, and the county, and the planning commission recommended approval for this. So pretty straightforward. We will be coming back in the future to rezone the remaining lots across from the park to R 2, and to rezone the park from Special Industrial to Recreational District, which better fits the actual use of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Dufoor. Councilwoman Dunn?
Yeah, I did speak with the Scots concerning this, and actually, it will help that community because being S 1, everything in there is residential, so it really doesn't make sense to have this for S 1 when everything else that's there is residential. So I'm asking the council to vote with me to approve this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Dufoor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to close your public hearing. Councilmembers in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to approve. All councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero. Item 11B, Mr. Chairman, I've received a request from the applicant for the planning department to remove this item from the agenda at this time. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn, to remove this item from the agenda. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution authorizing replacement for temporary signs on public property for Jean-San Seven Fighting, ALS fundraiser walk-run benefiting the Jean-San Seven Foundation. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Councilmembers in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion here, motion passes seven zero. Item 13B is a resolution appointing Joseph R. McMahon III as court magistrate for the city of Kenner.
Council President?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor?
I believe Mr. McMahon is here, if you would like to.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Joseph McMahon. I agree.
All right, this is how it went. We had, one of the magistrates had to give it up to run for public office. We had, I guess, alternate that moved out of the the city and kind of wanted to retire, so we had to replace him. From what Judge Lozano told me, the way it went in the past is the mayor would call him up and say, here's your new magistrate, which I think is the wrong way to do it. There's reasons why judges aren't allowed to participate in politics. So this time around, we had, I guess, a lot of the attorneys. So this time around, we had, I guess, a lot of the attorneys, we had Judge Lozano, members of the city attorney's office, the prosecutor, and attorneys in my office, interview a host of people that were interested in it. Some came in, met, weren't interested at the end of the day. And these, you have this one, you have another one coming up, but the two they recommended that I select, and that's kind of the way that process went. So, I don't know either one of the men, I'm sure they find outstanding attorneys, but it wouldn't have been recommended. Is that good enough?
Sounds good to me.
Great job, Mayor. Madam Clerk? Oh, and also Wilmot?
If you wouldn't mind, just give us a little background on yourself.
Sure. I am a lifelong resident of South Louisiana, been an attorney since nineteen ninety-two. I've practiced extensively representing insurance companies, doing personal injury. I'm a former assistant district attorney, so I've worked in the criminal justice system. I have a wife and two grown sons, and, yes, that's my background.
How long you been practicing?
Thirty-two, almost thirty-two years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Schwarth. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen C is a resolution authorizing the settlement in the lawsuit entitled Sandy Matu versus the City of Kenner et al. I have a motion by Councilmember Schwarth, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, for a two-meeting deferral on this. Councilmembers in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes seven zero, for a two-meeting deferral. Item thirteen D is a resolution appointing Jeffrey D. Huff as court magistrate for the City of Kenner. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot.
And the second one is here, to introduce himself.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Yeah, so, practicing lawyer now for fifteen years, came out of law school, Loyola Law School, went to go work for the district attorney's office under Leon Canizero, where I rose to be one of his, am I getting feedback?
Yeah.
Where I rose to be one of his homicide prosecutors from there, Jefferson Parish. Paul Conick took me in for three years there. From there, I went up to the Attorney General's Office and prosecuted high-profile cases around the state. Probably have tried upwards of seventy-five jury trials when it comes to experience of courtrooms. I think I'm pretty qualified. After doing that for some years, I decided to branch out, start my own firm, where I do a combination of criminal defense work, personal injury work, and family law matters.
Councilman Lahat?
Jeff, where'd you go to high school?
I brought that up in the interview, and it docked me some points, I enjoyed, but it's Jesuit High School.
Ooh. Everything was going so well.
It did, in the interview, he lost points.
I lost points.
He lost points. Just to clear the record.
I'm voting on it, though.
Should we defer this? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Motion by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item thirteen E is a resolution approving the restoration of a non-conforming use for Denise Williams at seven twenty-five and a half Clay Street. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fourteen is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item fifteen is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item fifteen A is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three forty-six, and ordinance accepting the quote received from Duhan Machinery Company Incorporated, an authorized dealer to repair unit two zero zero four, a two thousand six Bobcat Versa Handle in the amount of eleven thousand eighteen dollars and eighty-five cents for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen B is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three forty-seven, and ordinance accepting the quote received from Louisiana Cat, an authorized dealer for parts and labor to repair unit twenty-one fifty-five in two thousand sixteen four twenty backhoe in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Schwarth, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen C is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three forty-eight, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Howell Fencing to furnish and install puppy panel fencing at Dog Park in accordance, at Kenner Dog Park, in accordance with letter bid twenty-three dash twenty-eighty-five in an amount of fifteen thousand four hundred eighty dollars for the Department of General Services.
Shouldn't that read H-O-W-L, Howell, like a dog?
Oh.
Okay, it was a stretch.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen D is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three forty-nine, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Technics Systemas Incorporated to purchase one DC welder unit in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three twenty-eighty-four and the amount of five thousand four hundred dollars for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen E is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Dedham Sportsman's Center Incorporated, doing business as AAA Police Supply, to purchase one hundred fifty Type II adjustable LED RMR three twenty-five MOA red dot sights in accordance with sealed bid twenty-three sixty-seven eighty in the amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Kenner Police Department. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-one, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from ECB Solutions LLC to purchase one transformer with terminals in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three sixty-seven eighty-five in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Schwarth. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-two, and ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the rotating assembly at Twenty-Fifth and Salem Lift Station by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen H is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-three, and ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the external spur drive gears for the Ashbrook Belt Press by GSM Engineered Fabrics LLC in the amount of six thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars eighty-eight cents for the Department of Wastewater. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen I, summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-four, and ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid from MR Pittman Group LLC to rehabilitate wastewater treatment plant number three, clarifiers one through four, in accordance with sealed bid number twenty-three sixty-seven eighty-three, in the amount of four thousand, I'm sorry, four million four hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Schwarth.
Councilman Lahat?
Yeah, I'd like an explanation as to, Joe Anken, I guess my question is that, when we went on the tour of the plant, was this one of, does one of these working and three aren't, is that what you described to us on the north side of the plant?
Yes, that's correct. These are the original clarifiers that were built in nineteen eighty-five.
Okay.
So that, we need the four clarifiers in order to have a redundant treatment capacity, like for events like this, where we have heavy rain.
Don't we have one right now?
We have one working right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If I may relax. Wilmot?
Thank you. I just wanted to make it absolutely clear. This isn't for one clarifier, this is for four clarifiers.
All four clarifiers, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's going to put them back in action, and we're going to be where we need to be with those clarifiers.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I, I have some, thank you, Joey. I have some additional questions, if I may, Ms. Herring, regarding how are we going to pay for these?
So the funding for these were under the LDQ loan number five, so it's already a loan we have established as a project under that, so it's bonded out money.
So it's already in place, and...
Correct. LDQ loan number five.
Okay. That's all, thank you.
Councilwoman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to clarify with the, or ask the question, what's the timeframe, like how, once we approve this, how long will it take for them to be finished and begin the work?
The contract, the contract time right now is three hundred and thirty days. However, it's for the new electrical control panel to run the clarifiers, that's running about three hundred and sixty-five days, so there may be an adjustment of the construction time as we go on.
Okay, so about a year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Branigan?
So we have four, and only one's working?
Yes, sir. Because of the structural issues, we can't really have anybody in there, there's some torn skirts on the inside, there's no one that can really get up on top because of safety issues.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have other clarifiers on the plant in service, it's just those four of the original, that's the one that's working.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Passoni.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen J is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-five, and ordinance ratifying the emergency purchase of electric wiring, electrical wiring for the, for the digester electrical panel at the wastewater treatment plant by New Light Electrical Wholesalers in the amount of thirty thousand four ninety-four fifty-nine for the Department of Wastewater. Motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen K is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-six, and ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Roman Catholic Church of the Archdiocese of New Orleans, doing business as Archbishop Chappelle High School for the use of Butch Dewey Playground. I have a motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Brennan.
Councilman Lahat?
Yes, this is an extension of the existing Archbishop Chappelle Softball CEA, which has been a great CEA between the City of Kenner and the Archdiocese. The last couple of years, they've brought a lot of people to Kenner, they're going to, they've put a lot of money into this field already. Subject to the extension, there's going to be a lot of community involvement, there's going to be several clinics that Coach Scott O'Brien is going to be giving to the public to entice girls into the softball sport itself, which we need, and they're going to be putting capital improvements into the field, going to be putting down, hopefully, a turf field soon, which would be a great addition. So there'll be a lot of community involvement in this. It's been a really good CEA, which has been a great partnership between the city and the Archdiocese the last couple of years. Obviously, I hope we all extend this, because I think this is a great way to do it. Once again, a great addition to Butch Dewey Playground in Ronnie's district, so I appreciate y'all's support on this.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for that great explanation, and it does make me feel better knowing that this is a renewal of a CEA. That's very important, so, and Chappelle's been, I understand, has been great with this, and of course, the things that are, the City of Kenner is deriving benefits from are also good, so that's, it looks like it's a, it's a win-win, so, thank you very much.
Councilman Schwarth?
Thanks, sir. Also working with Councilman Lahat, we're going to try to work with the East Bank Little League and also get those other three fields turfed as well. And if we were able to get those fields turfed, we'll be able to compete with LaSalle on getting tournaments over at Butch Dewey. It'd be a great outcome, a great opportunity for kids, for the city, for everyone. It'd be a win-win situation, fair play.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Branigan?
I just wanted to say that it's an incredible thing to have turf fields in our city, because when you have a rain event, it doesn't wash out the facility, it's just, they can play an hour, hour and a half later, it's just unbelievable. So, this addition in our city starts the ball rolling, hopefully, for other fields in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen L is summary ordinance number thirteen thousand three fifty-seven, and ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor between the City of Kenner and the Parish of Jefferson to provide street repairs, street repairs and resurfacing to Thirty-first Street between Helena Street and the Duncan Canal in Kenner, Louisiana, in an amount not to exceed three hundred forty thousand dollars. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember McKenney.
Mayor Glazer?
Yes. Last meeting, we brought something from the floor. My preference is not to bring things from the floor without giving adequate notice to all of y'all, but this was a project, it's actually two projects taking place on Thirty-first Street. Some money's coming from Jefferson Parish, and some money is coming from unused CDGB money from 2018 that's expiring, and if we don't use it, we lose it, and that is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So Bo Brothers has the contract to do an overlay of Thirty-first Street, and so it's not two different projects that I don't have to mobilize twice. They're going to start tomorrow, and they should be finished by Wednesday, the total over, the coal mill, the overlay, the striping, and the reflective markings on the roadway. But it needed to be done before we lost the money. That's why we wanted to get Bo Brothers out there quickly, and the layover of, and that's why it came from the floor for first reading, last meeting. So that's the explanation of why it came last meeting, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes seven zero. Item sixteen is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item sixteen A is an ordinance approving an agreement for time and attendance system with advanced scheduling services with Tyler Technologies for a one-time fee of two hundred eighteen thousand six hundred and one dollars, and recruiting fees not to exceed fifty-one thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars annually. Item sixteen B is an ordinance authorizing fifty thousand dollars increase to the expenditure limit for the purchase of various types of ammunition from Precision Delta Corporation, utilizing State Contract Number four zero 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 two three three one two for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen C is an ordinance declaring five Ford Crown Victoria police vehicles as surplus and authorizing their donation to the Harahan Police Department. Item sixteen D is an ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of the Fairbanks Morse Submersible Pump at Thirty-first Street in Washington Lift Station by Fluid Process and Pumps LLC in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars for the Department of Wastewater. Item sixteen E is an ordinance authorizing the utilization of State Contract Number four zero 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 one eight nine three zero with Cintas Corporation Number Two to provide uniform rentals and purchases, facility solutions, and safety supplies on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars annually for the Department of Field Services. Item sixteen F is an ordinance approving the purchase of materials and supplies through the Louisiana Federal Property Assistance Agency. Item sixteen G is an ordinance approving the purchase of materials and supplies through the Louisiana Property Assistance Agency. Item sixteen H is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from RNS Corporation to upgrade the jail control panel computer and call-up integration system... Corporation to upgrade the jail control panel computer and call-up integration system in accordance with letter bid twenty-three twenty-eighty-seven, in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred four dollars for the Kenner Police Department. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the agreement with MB Three Incorporated, doing business as Civics for professional services related to Hurricane Ida recovery, to amend the services budget and term of the agreement. Item sixteen J is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Beacon Air Conditioning Heating and Refrigeration Incorporated to install and, to furnish and install a three and one and a half ton air conditioning and heating upgrade at Musfert Alino Concession, six twenty West Esplanade Avenue, Kenner, in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three twenty-eighty-eight, in the amount of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the Department of General Services. Item sixteen K is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Pacifica Kenner LLC for the use of public right-of-way on the median of Thirty-second Street for maintenance and use of the existing monument sign and existing banner display poles. Item sixteen L is an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the agreement with Linfield Hunter and Junius Incorporated, dated May eighth, two thousand twenty-three, for engineering and architectural services on an as-needed basis for Kenner Police Department facilities, to increase the not-to-exceed amount by three hundred thousand dollars for a total not-to-exceed amount of three hundred, three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilwoman McKenny?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to personally thank the, excuse me, the code director and the code department, Ms. Topol, for her work in, one of my, my office got a complaint, and I believe the mayor's office did too, about a property in a block on Thirty-fourth Street, and they were very responsive, and it was about a property that a house was for sale, and they weren't getting any offers, because the block was, they didn't have trash, they had a lot of unkept grass, and two weeks, that was about two weeks ago, and the code department took care of it, and they apparently got two, two offers on the house about two weeks later, so, thank you for your work, and I know that, you know, the residents and the new residents appreciate that as well, thank you. Also, I'm sorry, also, I do want to say that I'm upset that the energy representative left, because the, my, the, the electricity at my house is actually out, so hopefully, he's getting to take care of that as soon as possible.
Do you think it's weather-related, or... Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make mention on the corporate endeavor agreements. We had one tonight, we had one last meeting. Last meeting, of course, I felt quite differently than the way I felt tonight, and the reason is, is tonight, this is a renewal, and I think that's, it's already been well-understood and well-used, well-accepted, and so forth, so, that's why I supported it, it's with a great partner in our community, or right next to Kenner, it's Chappelle High School, which is a wonderful school. So, that being the case, again, I supported it. Last meeting, again, we had issues, in my opinion, that it should have been, we should have had a town hall meeting on it, and so, in the future, if we do have these corporate endeavor agreements that are associated with playgrounds, I kindly ask that we consider having a town hall meeting to let the people who are of that community be aware of what's going on. That's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilman Schwarth?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank the mayor and Mr. Gonzalez over there, and everyone else involved with the Roosevelt Project. I was taking a beating on that on Facebook for a while now, needless to say, but now it went from beating to praises, so I got to thank gentlemen over there, and neither Amy or you involved in that as well. Thank you so much, ma'am, for getting it done. Now, if we can get those trees cut, we'll, we'll be on our way to, good remedy to get the project up and running and smoother road. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Chief Condon?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that tomorrow, the Kenner Police Department is graduating their twenty-second academy, ten o'clock at Church of the King. We're gonna graduate six new officers, and then we'll be starting the next academy in three weeks. Also, October fourteenth, from eleven to four, we're gonna have our kickoff event to National Night Out Against Crime, free food, free drink, we're in a live band, about thirty-five different law enforcement agencies and first responders will be there for demonstrations, should be a lot of fun for the families, so, if you mark that on your calendar, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business, we have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, and our motions to reconsider or remove from a table position, we have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters, and we had no one sign up this evening, so, I have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God. Wow. I've never seen that far from me. Has that ever happened?